Good evening. Calling the meeting to order, please join us for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I make a motion for approval of the this evening's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion was made by Commissioner Catan and supported by Commissioner Patterson. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the workshop held August 30th, 2022, and minutes held, regular meeting held September 6th, 2022. Support.
Motion was made by Commissioner Catan and supported by Commissioner Stroh. Is there a discussion? Hearing staying none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, we're two public comments and Tim Rudowitz has requested to speak this evening. So you're first up, Tim. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for putting me on the agenda tonight. I'm here as the chairman of the DDA. And as you know, we had made a request to add the executive director to the city's health insurance plan. And I guess from what I understand, there was quite a bit of discussion a couple of months ago. And I'm going to try to answer everybody's questions and just kind of give you an outline of what we're looking for here. Essentially, right now, we're giving the executive director $200 per month for his health insurance benefits. I guess one of the questions was, what happens with that $200? Well, we don't expect the city to, you know, pay that. We would continue paying the $200. But we have combed our budget and there just really isn't any money that we could find in there to pay the balance of these benefits. Now, my understanding, and I've heard a couple of different numbers, but heard a number roughly around $950 a month for a single person to be on the city's health insurance plan. For us to purchase as an individual, we're north of $1,200, at least. So as in your packets, there should be some information that I provided. And you'll see that Public Act 57, which was passed a year or two ago, says that cities, that says that employees of this, of the DDA, city DDA's, are eligible for group benefits. So our director, whoever that need be, would be by law eligible for the benefits. So really, the question we got here is how do we pay for them? And we're pretty strapped out at even $200. We looked at a couple of different things. We looked at maybe cutting some of the funding to the center for the arts. They plead severe poverty, as do we. Even if we did something like that, that wouldn't happen until next year, after this first budget year. We found about $900 if we make the, if we have the farmer's market pay for the porta potties that they use down there in the old AT&T parking lot and across the street. That's $900 and, you know, that wouldn't happen until next year either. I just got some notes here of the things that you guys have discussed in your meeting. I'll try to answer them. Our director is in fact a contract employee. Jim is working currently on kind of an extended contract. We had extended his contract back in, I think, June. Came up in July. We have the same fiscal year that the city does. And so he's kind of working without a contract now because we're waiting to find some kind of solution for this benefit question. Would we have to amend the contract? Yes, we would obviously have to amend the contract. I'm not a lawyer, but you know, essentially, I think what it would say was that you would pay more benefits for the executive director. But we wouldn't pay for it with the benefit. Executive director is eligible and would be on the city. And we would pay a portion and the city would pay a portion. So let's see here. Looked at our budget. So in the notes in the letter that we sent, I think you can see that a couple of different things here. The DDA has been pretty valuable to the city of LaPire over the last several years. I forget the amounts of brands that we've secured for the city, for the downtown area, but it's in the, it's in the several hundred thousand dollar range. And so I think, I think just from that standpoint, we're definitely valued to the city. We are a, we're really a top level DDA. We're in the Main Street program. And the Main Street program, you have to, you have to qualify for it, which we did finally about five years ago. And it's kind of funny, we were due to bump up to the master level and we thought, well, you're going to have, generally, you have to jump through a bunch of hoops and do a bunch of things to get to that master level. We applied for it and they said, oh, you guys can have it. We're very well thought of, DDA statewide. And I think that reflects very favorably on the city itself. The Main Street people in Lansing and the MBC are asking us, and they host events here in LaPire, and conferences and meetings and different things. So they, they're very high on LaPire, mainly based on the efforts that the DDA has put forth in the last few years. If you also look in your notes in our, in our request, I think we've had 20 some odd other DDA's that are in there that we're comparing as far as, do they get benefits? What is the executive director getting? And I think on the health insurance end of it, it was 19 out of 22 got, got benefits and it was paid for by the city. Or the, or the city paid the DDA and the DDA paid for it. I'm not really sure what the mechanics of this would be. That would be something that we'd have to work out, whether we pay it and get reimbursed, or I don't really know. But you know, the point is, is that every DDA that's mentioned in this request is a Main Street DDA. So these are, we're talking about the top level of DDA's, the upper 5% of DDA's in the state here. We're not talking about every DDA out there. We're talking about the, you know, the cream of the crop, which frankly, we are one of those DDA's. So I'd like to make the request that the city, well, let me put it, there's another point in there that, you know, one of the things we've done in the last few years is we, we did our lighting project. Got the Cobra lights taken out and, and this saves the city $27,000 a year, just, just this lighting project we did. We took out a loan that we're paying back for that project, for our portion of the project. So, you know, I think we've brought in money, we've saved the city money. And frankly, if we have to, to have a top level director, we've got to be competitive. And to be competitive, we're going to have to offer benefits. And I think that's pretty clear when you look at these other, these other Main Street DDA's. Last year, there was eight executive director openings in Main Street DDA's. Now, I understand that that's generally a higher number than normal. But, and the thought is, is that maybe that was a result of COVID burnout or something like that. But my point is, is that if we have to go out, and we will have to go out at some time in firing an executive director, we're not going to be able to be competitive and get the top line people that we would, that would maintain, you know, the status that we're at now. So in a nutshell, that's, that's my, that's my request. And if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them and try to, try to help anybody make up their mind later on. Okay?
Thank you for your support and Commissioner myself, we'll get back with you after a discussion with our manager, when Dale returns.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I think it was Melissa's hand that went up first. I just like to open it in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, I ask that you fill this room with your Holy Spirit. Would I pray that everyone in this room would not just know of your name, but truly seek a relationship to know you? You are a good, good Father. So grateful that I have you. I want to first thank every man and woman who could are serving our city in whatever capacity they are serving. I'm so grateful that they care enough to want to serve or work for our city. One thing specifically for Dave Fresh and his family and all that they do to the city and this community. We just ask that you bless them abundantly to overcome that this free time that they can spend being with each other, loving each other, enjoying each other, and thanking you for all the gifts that you have given. I pray more that you would bring peace to this city. We thank you for your hand of protection on the city, the people of it. And in particular, my being, thank you so much for all that you have been offering. I pray more that you would reach each heart here and each mind, that you would remind them of honor and trust and friendship and integrity, something that everyone in this room, including myself, who needs to be reminded of regularly, thanking for the nudges. I, I'm going to, I'm going to recite the prayer that you taught us, Lord. If there's anyone who wants to join, please give them the courage or the desire to. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We need us not in temptation, but in love, for life, as we need him, and the power, and the glory, and the glory of him.
Kim Hatch, I'm the steward of the Team Street Union and I had a lot to say, so I wrote it down so I don't get soundballed. So I'm just going to read it. I wanted to remind the commission that the position of the city union submitted in writing in the commission, to the commission on June 24th, signed by the stewards of the Team Sturds, F. S. M. TPOAM and Police Officers Labor Council Bargaining Units opposing extension of city healthcare benefits to the DDA executive director position for the reasons previously stated in our letter has not changed. In addition, I would note that the DDA has reviewed their budget and determined they do not have the funds to pay for the benefit they are asking the city to provide. Why doesn't the DDA use their authority that by law allows them to enact a special millage in the DDA district to raise revenue to pay for the benefits? The DDA, as well as the city commission, appear to be tiptoeing around the fact or blatantly ignoring the fact that the city's healthcare plan will be required to cover the DDA's employee not just as a single person at a premium rate, but is also required to cover a spouse if the employee becomes a couple, which will double the premium, as well as ending employees' future family members, which could triple the monthly cost. I have had this fact confirmed by the city's health insurance care provider. Has the DDA or the city commission bothered to check that? The DDA position does not have any accountability whatsoever to the city administration. But they want the position to have the benefits afforded to the city, to their employees. The DDA position reports to a volunteer unpaid board that conducts very minimal and informal performance reviews on an irregular basis, if at all. Extending this benefit, as well as the city paying for the benefit after the DDA already receives over $100,000 annual aid from the city's general fund, is a slap in the face to all the bargaining units, which have for years negotiated in good faith and fairness and made significant economic sacrifices to maintain this benefit. It would disrespect and be unfair to all city employees who are accountable to and held to a high performance standard by the city administration. The DDA wants to offer their employee all the benefits without any of the associated costs, sacrifice, or accountability, which is absolutely absurd. I would also note that Commissioner Catan has attempted to sneak in his previous motion, working to also approve providing the city's retirement benefit to the DDA employee. This has never once been discussed by the DDA and the DDA, at a DDA meeting, nor does the DDA's full board approve approaching or asking the city to have provided and paid for this benefit. Finally, I would remind Commissioner Catan that you should be abstaining on this vote rather than certainly not pushing for it. So in case you didn't get all that, I've got copies for you.
If there's anyone else who would like to make a public comment at this time?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris Jadak, long time city employee, city resident, and TPOAM representative. I would just like to second my agreement with Kim's position on offering this benefit to the DDA director. The gentleman, I can't remember his name, got up here and gave a nice presentation about how the DDA did all this great stuff. But you have, everyone needs to remember, we as a city are a team. DDA doesn't do anything by themselves. The police department doesn't do anything by themselves. Fire department, parks and rec, DPW, nobody does anything by themselves. We're all part of the team. So although they're doing a great job, the rest of us help out with that job as well. And I agree, it's kind of a kick in the teeth or slap in the face, whatever. We want to give one person a great benefit and not everybody else. Prices are going up. Gas is going up. Everything's going up. What about the rest of us? And I'm not saying I need to come out here with my hand out. What I'm saying is, why should he get extra benefit or extra attention and not the rest of us? We're all part of the team. We all contribute. So in one way, you're, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. We will then move on to the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Support. Motion was made by Commissioner Catan and supported by Commissioner Swandell to support the consent agenda, approve that consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Bill listing.
Make a motion to approve the bill listing for September 19th, 2022, in the amount of $758,733.37.
Second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Patterson and supported by Commissioner Catan. Is there any discussion on the bills? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. Next, we have a proclamation for Chief Fresh, where I would like a motion. Right. Let me just do it.
One, two, three, go.
How about we do it all together?
Maybe they don't want to do it. You think you're going to retire?
Ladies first, Marla. Take it.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proclamation for David W. Fresh, chief of police.
I think it's U. V. N. O. S. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Motion was made by Commissioner Swandell and all the other commissioners. Second that motion. Okay, so I'd like to read it at this time. Do you want to go down?
You still have to listen.
Oh, yeah, I do. I do. I'm so excited. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, now I can read it. This is in recognition of Chief David W. Fresh. Whereas David W. Fresh officially began his career with the City of LaPire Police Department on July 1st, 1990 as a patrolman. He rose through the ranks to be promoted to patrolman one in 1995, and patrolman two in 2000, and then promoted to sergeant one in 2001, promoted to administrative sergeant in 2002. And he was again promoted sergeant two in 2005, and then promoted to lieutenant one in 2007, promoted to lieutenant two in 2015, and was promoted chief of police on July 10th, 2017. And whereas, Police Chief Fresh, in performance of his duties, serving the citizens of the City of LaPire, has received two lifesaving awards, two meritorious service awards, is a two-time recipient of the Mad Lloyd Saber Award, a departmental commendation, all while safeguarding life and the innocent in the City of LaPire. And whereas, Police Chief Fresh has devoted his time and effort being involved in the prison liaison committee, civil defense coordinator, LaPire area Citizens Against Domestic Assault, LaPire Education and Athletic Development Spence's Resource Fund, Police Training Academy, Emergency Management Training Council, LaPire County Chief of Police Association, and created the LaPire City Police Officers Charitable Fund. And whereas, Police Chief Fresh has brought a vast range of skills and expertise to the aspects of police administration and a wealth of experience from probably serving this community for over 32 years. And whereas, Police Chief Fresh will retire on September 23rd, 2022, after having given conscientious, responsible, and professional service to the citizens of the City of LaPire, and leaves those in the City of LaPire proud to have known him and to have served with him. Now, therefore, let it be known that I, Mayor Debbie Hartford, and LaPire City Commissioner wish to honor and express our deep appreciation to Dave W. Fresh for his efforts and devotion to public service and wish him continued success in his retirement, dated this 19th day of September, 2022.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Okay, there are no public hearings tonight. Down to a city manager's report and this evening, any, we're going to discuss water. If you have any questions that remain or any unanswered, not quite be able to answer some of those questions or concerns? And I think most of Dale has gotten back to him. Is there anything left that you would like to discuss?
I have questions. So I didn't get a response to a question that I sent to the city manager late last week, but it kind of hit the heart of the question asked. So I had relatives here who live on the north end of town receive the letter dated September 2nd on September 12th with a pilt. So my concern is, is the original number of this 500 number growing? Or were there of this 500 number, some houses were initially missed and we're playing catch up on getting to them? So that's kind of where I would like to have an answer.
Jeff, do you know that?
Do you want me to respond?
Yes, please.
There was some initially missed on the first, the missed apartment comp. When we did this the first night, we worked late, tried to get this list together. We sent those initial ones out and then we realized there was a few missed after she checked the records. And we now back out and distributed a few letters to some of the ones that missed.
So, but the numbers not going.
No, the numbers actually were lower after we went through and confirmed some of our, all the records that we had. It actually went down from 530, it wasn't 530.
My only question, Jeff, is that I had some residents saying that a few years back, their water lines were dug up for various reasons. But during that process, they determined that they did not have galvanized, or that they didn't have ban pipes, I guess, that galvanized or that were higher. How are you handling that? Are you, do you have to redo those homes, if they're under that number, that 500? Or obviously, they don't want their yard dug up. And if there's not a big need, we would want to have to dig up their yard.
Yes, right now, Madam Mayor, we are all too, we dropped the numbers down to 409, I believe. 408 services right now that we have unknown. And we are hyper-escalating approximately 15, 20 per day to get that number down and find what's out there.
All right. Thank you.
Patriots for you.
Just as my parents should watching the news before coming in, Great Lakes Water has set the date back for the repair work being completed until October 5th.
So it's my understanding that we're still kind of under water restrictions, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We, we got to watch, we had low pressure this morning. They're back feeding us through Great Lakes to their north service center. And they lost power up there this morning and then had kicked down generator power. That usually takes like a five minute delay. And we lost like 12 PSI just in that five minutes. So that's how it affects us because we're the last ones on that line.
Okay.
I just want to, just basically say, I know you and your team are working yourselves to the grindstone and we, the public, see that backdrop out there every day. So I thank you for the work you're doing. I just want to make sure as far as, because of what happened in Flint several years ago, the best course of action is transparency, transparency, transparency. So as, I would like to see us as a city, you know, as, as we discover something, it's on our website. As we discover something, it's, it's on Facebook. I want, not just us as commissioners to be in the middle, I want a general person, the public, to know exactly what we know and have access to that information every given time. You know, this is something that's scary to people, you know, for reasons. So I just want to make sure we're popping gears properly for communication and open transparency with the public at large. Keep up, keep up working hard. We need you too. So thank you.
Do have one final question regarding businesses or churches. Have they been tested? What do, how do, how do they enter into this?
Well, the state schools. The schools, we confirmed all the services. I talked to the past director for me and then I hold records on some of the schools and what they have for service going to their school. But as to answer one of his questions, he said, well, with that being transparent, we are also issuing, every time we locate the line, we're issuing them a letter that, hey, you don't have lead service line. And we also, if we're finding lead service lines, we're also notifying those people that they continue to use your, your filters. And if there's a lot of water, we'll let them know there's a lot of water available if they need it. But that's how we're going to keep it transparent. As soon as we find them out, we're handing out letters. As far as the.
Either way.
Yes, either way, whether it's good or bad, we're doing both sides.
And water is available at DPW from.
From seven to three thirty. And then again, behind the Lapeer County Hall Building. They might have.
Information for everybody. I know that it's kind of in the newspaper center, but just another reminder that there's water out there available. You need that water. Anything else? Thank you for everything that you have done. Continue to, please update us. City Attorney's Report.
Thank you. It's not really a report. You've heard me do this before, but maybe not quite like this. It's my turn, Dave. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve with you over the years. I have sat like you and watched many meetings through a great number of years. We've seen commissioners come and go. We've seen disagreements over issues, but there's one thing I never disagreed over. And that was the value of your service to the city. That has been an absolute unanimous, universal verdict. You have been nothing but good for the city. And everyone here at the table, everyone I know throughout the city, and certainly speaking on behalf of myself, it's been a great pleasure. And I really thank you for your service. You've gone so far above and beyond. You have provided input into, I was trying to guess, probably thousands of cases that have come through our office. And for those of you that don't know this, when we get a city prosecution file, every file comes with a note. Every single one of those files, except with the exception of when he's on vacation, comes with a note from the chief. And he describes certain things about the case. He knows every case. And he comments on, this is a direction I'd like to go, or this is something that maybe we should consider. And when you look at him, he is the rock of Gibraltar. He is the definition of steady. But he also has a very compassionate heart that a lot of folks don't know about. And over the course of the years, we've had some unfortunate folks that make their way through the legal system. And the chief and I have had an opportunity to collaborate on things where in other communities, I can assure you, they would have a book thrown at them, they don't necessarily here. Because he has allowed me to do things and take actions, to put people in treatment programs, to work with them, where people come out the other side and they say, thank you. And they write letters and things. And it's that he has put your community in a much better place and has sort of redefined how things should work and how they should be prosecuted, even in the courts. And that's all thanks to his personal attention because he looks literally at every file. I don't know anybody else that says that. That's, it's been an absolute pleasure. I'll say that lots and lots of times. You can't possibly be repaid for everything you've done for the city. You can't. We all know that. Like many of the ones before you, we can't repay you. But it has been my great pleasure to watch you do some of it. I get to see a little glimpse of, I get to see him do some of his best work and it's not done in public. He is a very proactive person. He is a deep thinker and he heads off situations before they become situations. And a parade and a potential demonstration is a great example that we had here a couple of years ago. Could have been a real problem. It wasn't. Why? He stepped right out, not in front of television cameras, not in front of radio microphones, but said, we're not here to oppose you. We're here to work with you and make this work. Again, I don't know an awful lot of others who do these types of things. He doesn't hesitate. He doesn't have anyone say, hey, you know, you really should go do this. These are his ideas. It's just the way he thinks and the way he's wired. I have said this before to you folks and to anyone that would listen, because I have said this story everywhere. I went to a school security meeting a few years ago after a very, very unfortunate situation in Oxford. One of the featured speakers was your chief. Others took the stage and they made their comments and I sat there and listened and as an ex-school board member and still somebody very, very concerned about our youth and the directions that things are going. And when the others spoke, I felt, you know, we're going to be okay. Things are going to be all right. We've sort of got this. Dave was the last one to speak. I apologize for calling you Dave, chief. When your chief spoke, I'm sure it wasn't just me. Everyone in that meeting didn't think we were going to be okay. They didn't feel we were going to be okay. We knew we were going to be okay. And that was because of you and the force of your personality. It wasn't the showbiz and the lights. It was sort of that old Marine mentality, not on my watch. And you convey that better than anyone I've ever met. And I really, really appreciate that. It has been such a pleasure to work with you. I just, I can't stress that enough. You will be missed. I only hope that if I'm fortunate enough to wear a different hat someday, I can call on you and be that you be a great counsel. And I know you would in that room as well. I really appreciate everything you've done. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, guys.
For board and commission appointments, we do not have any applications in at this time. Yeah, it's the one position locked to the DDA. And actually two, although our paperwork says one for EDC and TIPA and Brownfield. Fortunately, one of the members recently passed, so that's two. It just happened. It just happened. So and then there's under commission appointments, there's income tax, board of review, the pier building authority, prison liaison committee, zoning board of appeals. Those are two alternate positions there. And then the city clerk election commission, the equity board, and we will oversee, has received one letter of interest for that. So. I guess we've got public comments. Would anybody else like to make a public comment?
Yeah. Kim Hatch. I've worked in the planning department for twenty-eight years. Five planners, the AP DDA directors, and four of those directors also manage the Pigs Theater. Three of them also manage the Center for the Arts. And I want to address some statements that were made in the document that was written by the current DDA director, Jim Oliver, given to you in your packets, submitted with this request. First off, I want to say that the City of Lapeer is not the minion of Lapeer Main Street. We do not have to do everything that Lapeer Main Street recommends we do. And in the document, I take exception because Jim takes credit for a lot of things, but in actuality, he takes a whole team of people, like Chris said. He says, in Lapeer, it can be argued that the DDA, with the guidance of him as the director, is the main economic development engine of the community. I'd like to argue that. Read your development report. It sits in your packet every month. Twenty-one of the ongoing projects in the city, two of them are in the downtown. Neither of which Jim or the DDA can take credit for. I can tell you that the DDA and the director have absolutely no involvement in ninety-nine percent of the development that happens in the city. There hasn't been a new building built downtown in the thirty-two years I've worked here. And they certainly didn't have any involvement whatsoever in the marijuana industry explosion in this town that bogged down every single one of our departments for three years. Except to say, they didn't want it downtown. So exactly how can Jim and the DDA be the main economic development engine of the city? I guess me and Caitlin can just go home and put our feet up. And the rest of the city department's place just got a whole lot lighter because, hey, we got Jim, the DDA, as the main economic development engine in this city. I sure hope you ain't all buying what a select few in this town are trying to sell you. Because if you do, it's a poor reflection on each of you and your knowledge of exactly who does what and what it takes to make something happen in this town, whether it's downtown or not, because it's a team effort with all of us. Thanks.
Melissa. I just want to clarify something at the last meeting. I'd also like to read this quote because I think it pertains to this whole situation personally. It's by Tariq Ramadan. It says, criticizing to destroy is easy. Thinking in order to build is much more difficult to achieve. And I watched you people take Josh off the youth council when the newspaper said that he had a deadline of September 9th. You didn't even wait for the deadline to head, for him to collect what he was doing. He's working on this. I, in another meeting, asked the police clarify what you'd like the role of your youth council or your government for tomorrow to be. None of you could give me any guidance on that. And so it really showed our city a lack of honor toward Josh, a lack of integrity. Because he's your, he's, you guys are supposed to be working as a team. Did Josh know that he was going to be removed? And I think there was sixteen letters of support for him to stay on it. He does have some experience on it. And so I for one, and I know several other people, are beyond flabbergasted as what your goal is here. And I would love to see what that, just tell me what you're trying to do. What did his youth council not do that you think your group will do? What do you want them to achieve? And I've been to every meeting in the last year, one or two. One or two. I haven't seen real, like, hands in the dirt work, working with Josh. I've not seen anybody say, let's meet up on this day. Let's put our heads together and do this. It was beyond disappointing to me to see that you were treated kind of like that way. Beyond disappointing. It didn't go on those.
Is there any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Jonathan Crapie and I'm Mike Muller's partner. And I just want to reflect his comments about Chief Frisch acknowledging Dave for quite some time. We've had the opportunity to work together with the city prosecutions and things like that. And he's always just been Tom Hatch. And I said at the start, it's tender that he would be the best chief ever. I think I was right.
Well, it's done. We pause your comments and I will start with Chris.
Oh, yeah. A couple of things that, a couple of events happened this weekend. On Saturday, the Bieber Dash Bash Race. And then the grilled cheese festival. I might just steal some of your, you can reiterate.
That's all right. So no times.
So there's going to be lots to do this weekend, lots of things to support. I don't think I can top what Judgey, Judgey Wudgy over here said about. But I, it's been an honor to serve with you. And I think one of your advancements, I had just graduated, so you may have seen me down here trying to hold the line.
My case, because I remember you to swim out.
I think I just had like a goatee going on back, man, so. No, you will be missed and you did make the mistake of giving yourself home. I might need to call you every once in a while to say hello. But that is it.
I'm just sad. When I returned to Lapeer and joined the board of directors for the DDA, Chief Frisch was one of the first people that came up, welcomed me, shook my hand. And I knew that it was a voice of reason that I was in the presence of. Through the years, not even with the DDA and as a commissioner and as a friend, he has opened his office, he has opened his phone line, he has opened communication with me to give insight, to give me, insight probably to those, a perspective that maybe I wasn't thinking of, one that I truly know that I can count on. When asking of his employees and his officers for assistance, whether it be with palestrating for a youth theater program or additional requests or information with regards to safety and emergency readiness, he's always been able to lend that support and lend the hand and make sure that we have all the tools to provide services for our community. I'm just sad. I'm just so sad that you're not going to be here. But I'm also reassured that the person coming on board is going to be equal. And I'm looking forward to a long and open relationship. I'm just, I'm stunned with the same age and you're retiring. Other than that, the cultural arts are alive and well in the City of Lapeer. And the Center for the Arts has multiple shows in the season. Tickets are on sale now. So and so theater opens their twenty-two, twenty-three season this week. I think it's just a remarkable time in our city. There's a lot of progress. There is a lot of communication that needs to continue to happen. And I think that we also need to hold people accountable for what we are given their custody. So thank you so much.
Hey, what everybody else said, I will always take your words to heart that no matter what we're doing or what situation we're in, we all have something in common, always. We all have common ground and we all can find a solution if we work together. And you've been wonderful at that. You'll find a solution for everything. It doesn't matter if people come to you with problems and you will hold their hand and help them do whatever it is that they're trying to do. You've been wonderful for our community. And it is a bummer to see you go. It is. I've known you so long, I think since like nineteen ninety when you, when you came here. And we just appreciate you and those are really big shoes to fill. But we're, we have a really big guy with really. Keep up the job. And also, Mrs. Chief Frisch, thank you for letting us have your husband because I'm sure that that was not easy. I'm sure there were phone calls and days where he came home not in a good mood. And he probably may have taken it out on you or rent in the backyard and whatever. But thank you for letting him, thank you for putting up with him while allowing him to work for us. We appreciate it greatly. You're welcome. And Ms. Melissa, the youth council is absolutely, what its duties are, are spelled out, like, in the ordinance. Exactly what there is to do is certainly spelled out in the ordinance. And exactly what to do. So I mean, there's, that's, that's the guide is the ordinance. That's the rule we have to follow is the ordinance. So if you want, I can email you a copy of it if you would prefer the ordinance. Okay, that's it.
Who's your good thing?
I'll give it to you in a second. Oh, ma'am mayor, I'd like to make the request that all boards turn these cameras on during their meetings. I happened to visit the planning commission meeting last week, I believe it was last week. Times are blurry now. But the cameras were on. And there were three public hearings being held with, you know, a good chunk of people there. You know, this is something that everybody can make to the meetings. And going back to transparency, a lot of decisions are made and the other boards, especially the planning commission, they have authority. You know, the ZVA, hey, we get together every other month. But, you know, if there is a meeting happening for this government and there are people in this room, those cameras should be on and it should be live broadcast. That's, that makes no sense why they're turned off. So that's a small request. I would also like to make a request of decorum as far as interaction between members who sit here, not just in our meetings, but the boards as well, and employees that sit over there as far as their interaction with the public, when it's public comment. We should be treating people, person after person, thus say, as best as we can. But we're all here. A little bit of mistakes happened from time to time. But there was, I think a lack of decorum. But there was, I think, a lack of decorum witnessed last week. And I think we need to embrace the fact that we're all here to serve this community. And the best way to do that is with cool hats up here and over there. All right, good stuff. Duck Dash, the Saturday. The Quanis Club sold almost 2,900 Rover Ducks. It was a good time. Whereas, I think it was a thousand persons headcount. So the largest turnout of folks. Farmer's break was pretty low, but it actually served better because in the middle of the bridge then, it was a jet almost. So the ducks got out there pretty quick. Commissioner Patterson won 25 bucks. Thank you for donating it back to the club. That was very sweet of you. And then on to Chief Frisch. Well, hey, Chief, how, everybody I've talked to said how lucky we are. So I just want you to know that, you know, the outer county people are just absolutely adore you. And if Scott's still crying, then I'll put some, invest some stock into that. I think Mike, one of Mike's comments was as far as commissioners come and go, but no matter what the difference is between the commissioners, they have one thing in common, and that is our opinion of this man. And I absolutely agree with that. And like Commissioner Stroh, I was very sad when we got the news of your retirement. However, I think I've gotten to the point where I'm happy now. And not because I want to get rid of you, but because I understand your motivation is the lady sitting behind my daughter right now. And I think I fear her, so. And I wish you and her the happiest retirements. And this community has benefited greatly, just not from me wearing the uniform but everything else that has been done before. So I appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Bishop Henson.
Good. Chief Frisch. It has been an honor to call you chief. It will be a pure joy and pleasure to be appointed Dave. Enjoy your retirement. Thank you. And thanks for leaving us in good hands. We're gonna do well. Keep going on. Tomorrow is National Vote Registration Day. If you're not registered or you know someone who isn't registered to vote, it's a good day to get registered to vote. We need to vote. The Lapeer County Health Department is supposed to be getting the new COVID vaccine in Wednesday. And their walking clinics are Wednesday, I believe, from nine to six. But they're going to be held at the Innovation Center, the Lapeer West, because they're paving the parking lot. So great opportunity if you haven't had your new COVID chat. Dig it up.
Does that start next Wednesday? Where's it start about?
It starts the 21st. February. Yeah, Wednesday. And yeah, to the end of October, unless the parking lot's paved first. This one.
Chief Frisch. Thank you. Thank you. I do have something that was, that's all right. First of all, thank you all who gets set. I have something that I want to present to each one of you. These are an apartment challenge cards. We give these out to people when they render service above and beyond what is expected of them. I see that every time that I come to these commission meetings. I see that every time that I see you out there volunteering your time for our community. Little pay, little reward. I just want to emphasize to you how much I respect that. It is not easy to lay yourself out there. It is not easy to run for an office because there's things and arrows with every decision that you make. I know what that is like. You handle it very well. And I'm very proud to know all of you. Got it? On the front of these, you will see our insignia for our department. And on the back is our charitable fund. This is a joint effort between those two organizations. And again, it's a sign of respect and how much that we appreciate you. I do have one other one for an individual who goes above and beyond in this community constantly and gets very little recognition. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you. Ramona, can you, do you need to tell Dale or put into action what do we need to do to see about the cameras being on at all meetings? I will talk to Dale, your director, and let him know the results anyway. Thank you. Yes, the duck race was fabulous. There was a lot of people attended, I believe.
Thousand. We couldn't check all points because we had a head counter at the front, but people were coming in from all, all directions. So we're, we're low guessing a thousand heads.
And so I know that some other businesses and other organizations, nonprofits, also did duck display in their business or nonprofit to raise additional funds for the Quanis, for the, for the kids. And I'm happy to report that thanks to Commissioner Splendel, that holiday people won second place. If there's a second, there really isn't a second, but it was Chuchu Trade Center. You'll have to check it out at the PICS. Anyway, thank you for doing that. Made a service. There's some different events. Like Commissioner Atwick did talk about the Beaver Dash, which is a Saturday. A volunteer meeting is at 6:30 at the, at the trails. Seven, eight twenty-five is the packet pickup and last call for the run, I guess. And so the schedule goes on. If you want to know when a race is going on, I have the schedule in front. So after the meeting, I'll be here for you to view. But it goes all the way. Youth races at 1:45. Doesn't end till 8:30. Oh, no, 8:30 is food and beer, uh, the chips. Clothes. Yeah. Anyway, that should be good. And I know that they work very hard as well. Thanks to the community coming together for these projects, that's why this can happen. And that's why it's, is this the third year or the second year? Second year. So huge fundraiser, and that's why we have all these wonderful parks and different activities is because of the community working together. Okay. Farmer's Market continues to October 29th. There's Out of Darkness, which is September 24. That's from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at Rogan Park. And if you've never been there, that is quite the special event. I mentioned the Beaver Dash and the Grilled Cheese. We think there's three or four various restaurants involved that will be doing that. So make sure you don't eat breakfast, so you have one for three or four grilled cheese. The Oktoberfest, which is hosted by Dilted Access, will be September 24th from noon to 10:00 PM. So that's a Saturday as well. And then Bubbles and Boomsit is October 1st, and that's from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM downtown, in the pocket park area. Just a reminder for the commission, please take a look at the community evaluation and make sure that Ramona has that by this Friday. Put my smile. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
Almost. Now it's my turn. God, crying. Thank you for everything that you have done for the city of Lapeer. It's been my honor to have you as our chief. A place I've known for about, well, since the 20 years. You've always been there for all of us. And if we called you or texted you, you had an answer for us. I always appreciated knowing that we were, you and your team, and I want to include your team, was always there, always knowing and looking out for all of us, taking a look at what's happening in other communities and making sure that it didn't happen. Lapeer Bay is. The winner of that's downtown, just, just everything. It's been such an honor. So I'm not gonna say goodbye. I know that you're leaving as our chief, but you are still our friend, and I know that you'll be along. You don't leave that far away. So you'll be along. Correct on you? Yes. You both can come along. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
No.